...November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleela McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Are you not hearing me?
Gotcha.
Yeah, got you now.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Yeah, here.
Thank you.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, announcements and committee reports, I've got a couple of announcements. First of all, I'd like to thank the Senior College. I had the pleasure of presenting last week, Anacortes City Highlights, last Tuesday. The Anacortes Senior College has been around for sixteen years in partnership with the Anacortes School District, providing courses to those very engaged community members. I think fifty-plus is the number they use. It's thirteen years since I presented local industry there before, and that was for Naval Air Station Woodby Island. So, thanks for all the great questions and continued community involvement to those who participated. Also, R Avenue improvements, again, it's not just the R Avenue Roundabout. I know it's been causing a lot of traffic and congestion as we make some progress, but we're about two weeks into the project. I am happy to report, though, that as of today, thanks to our incredible Public Works Department, they were able to work with WashDOT, and they've adjusted the signals. I know a couple of council members asked me about that, adjusted the signals on the westbound Twenty-second and Thirty-second to help alleviate some of the backup onto commercial. A third announcement I have, Thanksgiving holiday closures. City Hall closed Thursday and Friday this week. The library will be closed Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Holiday trash pickup schedule, so no garbage service on Thursday or Friday. That's, again, this Thursday, this Friday. And we'll collect Thursday customers Wednesday, so that's one day early. And then Friday customers will be the following Monday. And Waste Management will follow our schedule based with their recycling and yard waste pickup. All right, really exciting announcement, Anacortes High School football. So, thanks to the victory of Seahawks on Saturday, they advanced for the first time in history to the state semifinal game. They will play against undefeated Enola Colwell, so please show your support. Game will be at Seahawk Stadium, three PM Saturday, go Hawks. And then I will wrap it up with a Thanksgiving message. So, again, this week is Thanksgiving week. Hope everybody's had, will have the opportunity to spend some extra time with family and friends. Please travel safely. Remember, whatever circumstance you might find yourself in this holiday, I would encourage all of us to at least find something to be thankful for and have a happy Thanksgiving. All right, I am on to Economic Development Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. The Economic Development Committee met on last week. It was a very productive meeting. Again, we're refining our thoughts about what we're hoping to measure, how do we get there, and the things that we want to look at as a city to determine what our needs are and how do we help in this whole process. And so, there was, of course, at the meeting was Councilwoman Cleela McGrath, Councilwoman Hubick, and myself, as well as, of course, the staff was there, you know, very supportive. But we did have a vigorous discussion. We went over the parts of the economic development plan that we've been flushing out. We also discussed possibilities for reviewing the businesses and what we're looking for and what we're hoping to achieve and how might we get it. And we also pondered, you know, the thought of the resources that we would use in order to get what we need in order to make some decisions. And part of that was a bit of a discussion about the University of Washington, of course, they have PhDs and students that are willing to work with cities and measurements across the state and access to a lot of things. And so, we reviewed that and we viewed the Economic Development Alliance here in Skagit County, how do we partner those two resources to come out with a product that we're hoping for. So, we're still discussing much of that, how we want to go about it, you know, what things we want to measure, the stakeholders, schools, hospitals, and trying to come out with that common thread that weaves us together as a family of Anacortes citizens and trying to figure out how we aid that process. Because, you know, again, economically, there's a lot of uncertainty out there for a lot of industries, the challenges to try to stay vibrant downtown in itself, trying to stay active, and that's the hub of our city, and how do we aid those things? And, you know, so we're looking at all of those pieces. It is a new department, and again, we are working incredibly hard, and I think that we're finding some solutions and beginning now the process of moving it forward. Anything you want to add, Ms. Cleela McGrath or Ms. Hubick?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
I'm Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleela McGrath.
Thank you. So, on November fifteenth, council members Moulton, Walters, myself and staff met, it was Wednesday morning, and so we had a good kind of continued discussion about our cold weather shelter and what that's going to look like this year. Last year, there were more extended stays. This year, I think our goal is to coordinate between the Salvation Army and the Family Center and our funds available through our CBG grant to make sure that we are providing shelter for folks when it's cold enough, and that's kind of be a kind of a sliding scale, temperature is one thing, but also kind of wind chill and whether or not it's the moisture and rain or snow. So, working together to kind of identify what that looks like, and then also making sure that folks who access this cold weather shelter make sure that they have access to social services in addition to the nights that they spend there, so that we are trying to break the cycle of them needing it the following year. So, we had a lot of success this last year about folks that had utilized this opportunity have now found permanent housing, so that's a really good thing. But, again, we may have some folks again this year, and so we want to make sure we get as many services to them as possible and that we're coordinating all of our different providers. We talked a little bit about the Housing Consortium of Skagit County. There, it's called Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, and so we had Community Action and Jasmine Flores there to talk about it. She, she's really the lead for Community Action when it comes to that program. And it's typically require, it requires coordinated entry, and it typically is about twenty-four months to utilize the entire program. It has rental assistance, but then also some of those supportive services to get folks on their own. It requires a lot of engagement, home visits, et cetera. So, it's being fully utilized by Skagit County, it's a countywide program, but it's just nice to get an update from Community Action about it. What other things? Salvation Army has funding available, they've used some of it when it comes to rental assistance, but they have more, so if you have folks that need rental assistance, don't hesitate to reach out to Salvation Army or the Anacortes Family Center. And then finally, we talked a little bit about the fact that we do not have specifically homeless or community or human services identified in our Development Regul, Development Code. And so, where do those types of services fit? And so, starting to work on identifying where those services should be located within our Development Code and what that would look like. And so then finally, we talked a little bit about Department of Commerce has been, has made grants available to refurbish low-income or subsidized units and then also acquire units. I think there was five million dollars in for one pot and twenty for the other. I don't know if it quite works for Anacortes, but it's nice to be aware of these grant opportunities and make sure we're talking to any potential providers that could utilize them. And that is the extent of our meeting.
Thank.
I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Hold on, can I say one more thing?
Yep.
Sorry.
Please.
Excuse me. The other thing that was a big deal that hopefully at our next meeting we'll discuss is the fact that coordinated entry that had been facilitated by Community Action was awarded to Volunteers of America. So, that will be on our agenda for next, for this next week. Hopefully, Family Center has been involved with coordinated entry in the past, and, and they're planning to continue to be our point person for Anacortes, the Anacortes community. So, that's going to be an interesting change.
Okay, thanks. Next up is Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. Young, Ms. Moulton, I met just before this meeting with Public Works staff as the Public Works Committee to hear about two major issues. First of all, cross-street signal timing on South Commercial Avenue. WashDOT recently, and by recently, I mean today, changed the signal timing at Thirty-second, Twenty-second, and Seventeenth Street. And broadly, they changed the signal timing such that eastbound and westbound crossing Commercial are now equal priority. Commercial Avenue itself was changed to slightly less time than it previously had, and we're hoping that that will alleviate some of the congestion caused by traffic coming from the detour onto Commercial Avenue, and hopefully it won't negatively affect traffic on Commercial Avenue. It is within WashDOT's control, and they made all these decisions, but we had heard from constituents that, especially coming from Twenty-second Street, it took quite a few times triggers of the light in order to get onto Commercial Avenue, and a lot of traffic was headed up that way because of the detour on R. Notably, each of those signals are, there's a loop in the road to detect traffic, but then they rely exclusively on timers. So, there's no camera that can tell when there isn't a car any longer in the left turn lane. So, that's suboptimal in terms of maintaining traffic flow by itself. But then we also had constituents suggest that if you come eastbound on Thirty-second Street and want to turn left onto Commercial Avenue, that there should be a protected left to make sure that you can make that turn. That's a change WashDOT could make, and maybe it would be a minimal cost to make the change, but they would want to have a traffic study to indicate whether that's actually something that would be desirable to increase efficiency through the intersection. Obviously, we're not doing a traffic study now in the middle of the detour for the roundabout construction, but maybe next spring, after traffic returns to normal, we'll do that traffic study. Remains to be seen how much that costs and who has to pay for it, and so that may weigh into whether we do it or not. The major topic of our conversation, though, at the Public Works Committee was about a potential right-of-way maintenance code, which is something that we've been sort of talking about around the edges for quite a while now. Basically, the questions are, in the area of the right-of-way, which includes the street pavement, the parking strip, the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk, and then sometimes beyond the sidewalk, who maintain, who is responsible for maintenance of street trees, other vegetation, the sidewalk itself, clearing the sidewalk during snowfall, clearing the sidewalk of vegetation that's growing over the sidewalk, reducing its width? Who's responsible for the sidewalk when the sidewalk sinks or changes position in some way that creates a trip hazard? Do we allow rocks, boulders in the, in the right-of-way, right-of-way where people place them as landscaping or as to prevent people from driving through drainage ditches or those kinds of things? What about branches hanging over the sidewalk? What about the water meter that sits in the right-of-way? How are all of these things protected? And Public Works operations actually would really like to have a consistent answer to those questions and be able to say, these are the council adopted rules for how this is to be maintained and who has this responsibility, and in some cases, liability. So, the likely output here is a new chapter in the code to address the maintenance of all of this stuff in the right-of-way and allocating responsibility. And then, a corollary to this, but, but isn't probably fit, a fit for the right-of-way code is, what about native growth protection areas? What about other city-owned properties where there may be hazard trees, trees that could fall onto other people's property? How are those managed? What should the standards be? Who should be responsible for taking action where there is a hazard tree where it occurs? Some of those are big questions, and some of those have big dollar amounts associated with them in some particular areas of the city where there are lots of hazard trees. So, this was all just the beginning of the conversation, and those were some of the questions that we asked and that Public Works staff asked, and I expect that we'll spend quite a few more meetings working through those questions and then eventually onto a code.
That sounds awesome, but I can tell you the value of clearing the blackberries away from your meter, your water meter, in case you have to emergency shut off your water, that's really valuable, too. All right, Parks and Recreation Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. We had a quick meeting back on the sixteenth, council member McDougal and myself met with staff. Couple of updates that came out of the senior center. Back on the sixteenth, they had a Thanksgiving luncheon where they served one hundred and ten meals for attendees. They are also planning a Christmas luncheon on Thursday, the twenty-first of December. We spent the rest of the meeting giving a conversation around skate park funding. So, even with the money raised and the money that the city's putting forward, there is a difference of about three hundred and fifty thousand-ish dollars. Rachel and her team, who have been a driving force behind fundraising for the skate park, are still fundraising, but there are still extra things that need to be purchased, need to be set in. Mr. Hoagland attended the meeting and gave us an overview of whether or not we could use REIT funding or capital fund reserves, and it does look like REIT I will be a better avenue for us to go with because it's less restrictive than REIT II, and that fund is pretty healthy. And then also put on your calendars, December seventh at three PM, there is a soft ribbon cutting at the skate park. They are planning a much bigger event in the spring, and that was it.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements or committee reports that I might have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleela McGrath.
Thank you. I would like to make a modification to the agenda, adding a new seven A and pushing down A, B, and C and D. I propose adding an item to the agenda, the addressing the veto of ordinance four zero six two, adopting new AMC Chapter two point zero eight regarding appointive officers of the city, and following the statute thirty-five A dot one two dot one point three zero, if that is okay with the group.
I think we just need one more council member?
Second.
Okay. So, motion and seconded, which by council rules means it's added to the agenda. Seven, seven A under other business, and the topic is ordinance four zero six two, which, yes, I did veto that last week. Thank you. All right, any other announcements or committee reports? All right, we're on to public comment, and public comment is your opportunity to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, so, and I have a few folks that have signed up, and since we did add another agenda item, if you're here to speak on that topic, you can wait for that, or I can start going through the list. So, we've got four zero six two, interlocal agreement with Fidago Pool, and Resolution thirty-seven, more Fidago Pool stuff, and Public Works Committee recommendations. All right, so public comment for anything, I've got Judy Billings signed up first, and the topic is Mayor Miller, somewhat foreboding, I think. I am the topic of public comment, wouldn't be the first time. And make sure the light is on, and just one more time, state your name and what city you live in. The, so the little square below the microphone.
Push.
There you go, and you're on.
Okay, got it, thank you. Mayor Miller.
So, just one more time, state your name and.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Judy Billings, Anacortes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller, it's Thanksgiving week, and I would like to take a few minutes to thank you for your professionalism in handling your duties as mayor. Anacortes is very fortunate to have a person of your skill level, integrity, and common sense leading the way. You don't have a city council that has those same qualities, thus making your job that much more difficult. It's especially trying to always be pushing uphill when you're the leader, and you have a city council that is anti-American, arrogant, and determined to undermine your progress no matter how it hurts Anacortes. Once again, thank you for all your efforts in keeping Anacortes safe and maintaining a healthy environment for our citizens. Mayor Miller, we appreciate you, we appreciate your hard work and patriotism, we appreciate your ability to smoothly and efficiently run this city. Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We don't do applause here. Next up, I've got Donna Manning, I believe, also topic Mayor Miller.
Much shorter than Judy.
Yep.
The light's on.
Yep, and name and city, please.
Donna Manning, and I'm from Anacortes, and the topic is, again, Mayor Miller, and I also just wanted to say thank you. One, I want to thank you for your service and in the Navy, and I know that that isn't just you, that also means your family, because along with serving your country and making that commitment, it includes a lot of sacrifice, and so I do want to say thank you for that. I also, my personal opinion, I believe you are an honorable man of integrity, wisdom, strength, honesty, and patience. And similar to what Judy said, I felt when you ran for mayor, I was so impressed because I thought, this is someone who has great qualifications, and he has the experience in governing, and I just felt that we were so fortunate just to even have you run for the office, and I think that we are blessed to have you as our mayor, governing our small town of Anacortes.
Thank you.
One last thing, I did want to say a special thank you from our Patriot Corner, and this had to do with the Afghanistan plaque on the memorial wall at Coslin Memorial Park. And I kind of came in in the middle of it, so I know it just took a long time to get it through, which I didn't really understand why that would be an issue, but we're just so grateful for you helping us get that plaque up there on the wall where it belongs. And, and not only that, but also just the whole area and the park looks wonderful, and we just so appreciate the, the cleaning up of the park and the maintenance of it, you know, the new flag, just the beautiful brickwork and everything, and then, of course, the memorial wall. Because to me, that shows me that we're giving the proper honor and respect, not just to the veterans, but also their families, because the memorial park is really a lot of times for the other people, not just the veterans to go and see. And we had a great little surprise on Memorial, or, excuse me, on Veterans Day, we went there for, just to have a small ceremony with the Patriot Team, and we had a nice man named Michael show up, and he brought his Bebel with him, and he played taps for us, and so it really made the ceremony special. And, and again, it's just because Thanksgiving week, just really wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, next up, I have Suzanne Roner. Topic is also Mayor Miller, and no, I didn't have my mom call anybody. I'm feeling uncomfortable if you can't see, but thank you.
Okay. Suzanne Roner, Anacortes, thank you for this opportunity. I would like to thank Anacortes Mayor Matt Miller for having the political courage and the moral will to present the American Proud Resolution at the June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three City Council meeting, knowing that he was presenting the resolution to an indifferent council that had no interest in supporting it. I would also like to express my disappointment in the city council members present that day for failing to even raise a motion to consider the resolution. Citizens who opposed the resolution stated, and by the way, the resolution was drafted by a local citizen who was both lawyer and law school professor, citizens stated that the resolution had problematic language, that the use of the word proud was a problem, suggesting that the resolution was a cover for white supremacists and somehow associated with the Proud Boys. Council members used the same playbook and repeated these comments. These comments were based on misinformation that was found in publicly available emails exchanged by city council members and citizens opposing this resolution. These emails referred to a national group promoting American pride, and mistakenly assumed that the local group promoting American proud was part of the national group. Just to set the facts straight, the local effort has no website, problematic or otherwise. A review of the website of the national group could find no evidence that they supported white supremacy or were linked to the Proud Boys. The people involved in the local American Proud effort had no knowledge that there was a similar national effort to promote patriotism. The fact that this idea, that it is okay to love your country, germinated independently in a small American town called Anacortes and elsewhere across the country is by no means a coincidence. It just speaks to the hunger and the need that ordinary citizens have to express their patriotism and love of country. Thank you, Mary, thank you, Mayor Miller, for being part of this effort.
Thank you. Any other public comment, if you didn't get a chance to sign up when you came in? Okay, thank you, and I will move, make sure, move on to our next item, which is our consent agenda, items five A, B, and C.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move reapprove items, the consent agenda, items five A, B, and C.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We're on to public hearings, and Mr. Stefan, I'll give you some time to start working your way up. So, item six A is a public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four revenue sources, including increase in the property tax, and this is a discussion with possible action. I do intend to close the public hearing on this topic tonight, and Mr. Stefan, have we received any additional public comment that you're aware of? Because we've had this open for a couple weeks.
We have not received any additional public comment.
All right, and I can't remember whether you're going to bring up OpenGov for this one?
I can, yes, so I wanted to just point out that public hearing's been open since October, I think, twenty-third, and continued and continued to today. The revenue sources for the twenty-twenty-four budget are available on the city website to the public and the OpenGov portal. We continue to add different views there where you can, where we find interest or have a question about, or someone makes a comment about. Anytime that comes across my desk, I think, okay, this is a great, another view, another view, so that if someone else were to be viewing the, the revenue budget, they could click on those and see them. I can pull up that OpenGov site, which is if you go to the city website. And you go to the finance department. We've added a link directly to that portal. You scroll down a little bit, there's the interactive financial data, so that's another, another step closer. There's two reports related to the twenty-twenty-four budget. The one we're discussing today is the operating revenues. And then scrolling down over here on the left, there's various views here. The property tax distribution, I'll pull that one up to, to start the discussion since following this is the request to approve the levy for Skagit County.
Right. So, maybe I'll just ask one more time of the public if there's any public, members of the public that want to comment on this, and I'm sure I've been following OpenGov very closely as we roll it out. Okay, council, any questions on this one before I close the public hearing? Obviously, we'll, we'll roll right into the ordinance four six, four zero six one. All right, so I will close the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four revenue sources, including an increase in the property tax levy. All right, so you're on for item six B now, which is ordinance four zero six one. All right, so you're on for item 6B now, which is ordinance 4061, setting the 2024 property tax levy. And this is an ordinance, previously we've had this as a resolution, but I think we've heard from the auditors that it's more appropriate for a resolution. This is a discussion with possible action, understanding that counsel typically has a two-read rule on ordinances. So, Mr. Stefan, you want to take it away?
Sure, thank you. Pretty straightforward. This is a requirement by state law in Skagit County to have counsel pass this ordinance, which officially is requesting property tax from the county. This year, it's slightly different than previous years in that earlier, last year? Or was it this year? I forget now. The levy lid lift passed by a strong majority of Anacortes, authorizing the city of Anacortes to increase the levy rate. And this ordinance is requesting that levy rate as required. And the requested property tax amount is an estimated amount. The actual amount will be determined by the county next year, based on the levy rate that's in the ordinance. And by approving this ordinance, it is not setting the budget, it is only requesting that property tax from the county. The budget will be passed at a later point. And when I, the reason I mention that is that the property tax distribution among funds or among departments in the budget is not determined by this ordinance. This is merely just requesting the amount from the county.
And I think since we've taken all that effort and the citizens voted such overwhelming majority, I think it would behoove us to request that the county passes that significant amount of money over our way. All right, questions for Mr. Stefan, or questions from counsel? Mr. Walters?
First, there is a deadline by which we need to send this to the county. What's that deadline?
Correct. I failed to mention that. November 30th is the deadline to request this amount from the county.
So if we want another hearing on this, certainly we could move it again.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Quick point of clarification. This particular ordinance is completely independent of the 1% property tax increase that we're allowed to do by state law, correct? Like, that's separate from this entirely?
No, not this year. So typically, this ordinance would be the one requesting the 1%, but because we're doing the levy lid lift, there's no 1% question.
Cool. Yeah, just wanted that clarified, so thank you.
That's a good clarification. We can't ask for that. We've already got the...
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. Would you elaborate just a little bit on that difference, just for the public to be able to understand just a little bit about it? You know, you don't have to go into any lengthy detail, but just that there is a difference and the reason why we cannot on one versus the other. Thank you.
Correct, yeah. So annually, the city is only allowed to request 1% increase in the property tax revenue. So the property tax revenue received in 2023 can only be 1% more in 2024. But this year, since we have, the citizens have authorized a levy lid lift, there is no request and there's no ability to request a 1% increase. We're required to set the levy at the new levy rate, which is stated in the ordinance, which is the same as what was agreed on and voted for.
Any other questions? So again, it is an ordinance, and it's up to, oh, okay, yeah, go ahead. You can come up and talk on this subject. Although I did close the public hearing, I don't know if I need to reopen that.
Steve Anderson, Anacortes. I just want to make a comment using proper verbiage. We're talking about the citizens did this, the citizens voted for that. Proper verbiage would be a majority, say 51% of the voters, approved or disapproved. When a statement is made, the citizens, to me, it sounds like 100% went that route, and that's not true. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 67.74% of the majority of voters was for that levy lift. Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you want to move this to following meeting, or? Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I've reviewed the ordinance. It seems fairly straightforward, and there isn't much of a question here because voters did approve this amount in the levy lid lift. So I would move, first of all, that we suspend our rule on two reads of this ordinance. Usually, we're not doing an ordinance. A resolution wouldn't be subject to the two-read rule anyway, but I'd move that we suspend our rule on two reads, which if it passes with a supermajority vote, we could proceed to consideration of the ordinance.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, second by Ms. Hubick, and that was to suspend the two-read rule. Any additional discussion? All in favor? I think we can do this by voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
In that case, I move to adopt ordinance 4061, setting the 2024 property tax levy.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, second by Ms. Hubick to approve ordinance 4061, setting the 2024 property tax levy. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We are on to item 6C, which is still a public hearing. And this is a public hearing for ordinance 4063, Evans' vacation petition. This is a discussion item with possible action, and it is open for public comment. And Ms. Swetnam will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, and members of the audience. So tonight before you and for the public to provide comment on is a petition to vacate a portion of O Avenue. So to start with, vacation history, there is authority for the vacation of public streets, provided in chapter 3579 of the Revised Code of Washington. The power of the city to vacate, as set out in statutes, was explained and refined in the case Young versus Nichols. And there's a requirement that there be some element of public use, which was extended to the concept of public benefit. So that created the idea that to vacate public rights of way, there must be some public benefit to justify that. So initiating a request for a vacation can be done by petition, by and on behalf of abutting owners, or done by council itself. The code chapter, the municipal code that addresses the regulations for vacations, is chapter 1250. And on August 31st of this year, the city received a petition to vacate a portion of O Avenue by petitioner Bob Evans, who is joining us tonight and is available if there are specific questions. On October 2nd, pursuant to the code, council adopted resolution 3129, which scheduled the public hearing on the vacation for tonight. So the summary of the vacation, this is a map to try to help inform what we're talking about here. You can see that this area, this is 34th Street, this is 32nd Street, and the street that is in question here is O Avenue, which is right here. So the properties are, abutting properties are all owned by the Evans family. So the Evans business is up along 32nd Street, and the two parcels, both to the west and east of the area to be vacated, are also owned by the Evans family. So the proposed consideration for this vacation is a 20-foot-wide stormwater easement that will kind of lie on 10 feet on either side of a stormwater pipe that's going to be constructed. It's still in the design phase, so you'll notice that the ordinance provides a mechanism for getting a final legal description of that easement area and finalizing the easement itself on forms approved by the city attorney's office, once that design work is complete. And the petitioner is working with an engineer, who is working with the Public Works Department to identify what the best location for that pipe is. So again, this is another aerial view of the area in question. So you can see there's the Evans Funeral Chapel. This lot is owned by the Evans family, and these lots on either side of the area to be vacated are also owned by the Evans family. The public benefit, I think Andy, Public Works Director Ray Um is going to touch on what the public benefit is for this project.
All right, Mr. Ray Um.
Hello, Mayor and counsel. The public benefit, there's two pieces to it. The first is the easement, the value of the easement that we are giving up versus the easement we're receiving. There's a huge difference in the value, so that's positive for the city. It's, we're getting more in that piece. The more important part is, we have been designing a stormwater pipe to alleviate some surcharging of the stormwater system in this area. That current design is about 1.2 million. Taking this approach, and we're still in the design phase, but we're estimating around $250,000 to alleviate the same problem. So in addition to the actual cost of the easement, getting basically a discount on that, the remedy for the drainage issue in this area is significantly less money to the city, so we see that as a public benefit.
All right, Mr. Walters.
Since we don't have the easement in front of us, because it hasn't been drafted yet, would the easement allow the property owners to build on top of the pipe? Or would it prevent construction on top of the pipe?
We typically do not encourage things to be built on top of our pipes because they have a lifespan, and we will have to come in and replace the pipe at some point.
Right. Although it could be bulletproofed, so that maybe you could do that without digging it up, digging it, digging downward.
I've seen that, yeah. You do a double pipe situation where you can sleeve another pipe and have that pipe be able to replace it, but we would prefer to be able to dig it down to get it.
Well, and my question really is, what did you envision? And it sounds like you envisioned no construction on top of this 20-foot-wide easement.
That'd be my preference. I don't know what they're planning to do with the property. Typically, an easement, though, is a 20-foot-wide easement, and the pipe's right in the middle. And so you don't want, basically don't want things to encumber our easement, so we can't maintain it.
So then my next question is, why not just a generic utility easement that might be used for other utilities as well, within that 20-foot distance?
I thought about the same thing. We don't have any purpose for that at this time, so I can see why we're limiting it just to the stormwater easement. It would need to be wider. You can't have certain pipes, different types of pipes, like a water and a sewer pipe specifically. You'd need a lot of different size easement, so...
You wouldn't have enough room within 20 feet for any one of those additional utilities?
So if you had to put both a sewer and a water pipe in there, no, 20 feet is not wide enough.
What about one of those, though?
You'd be okay with one, yeah.
Yeah. I also think, especially when we're talking about vacations, we got to think about the future. And I think about the future giant pneumatic tube that Amazon will use to ship packages all around the city. You know, who knows what the future holds, but that tech, or some other future tech, could be useful in street rightaways or in this rightaway. I guess I would want us to think really hard about why not just a generic utility easement? Otherwise, this makes perfect sense to me, but if it was a generic or more all-inclusive utility easement, maybe we can't fit sewer and water and stormwater in there, and maybe we're only really planning for stormwater, but 30 years from now, maybe we'll be kicking ourselves if we hadn't, you know, asked for something slightly different.
And that might have been discussed. I don't know if a generic utility easement was discussed. I'll switch over. I wasn't part of the conversation.
Sure.
Yeah, so that's a great question. I believe the language in the proposed, so there was some proposed easement language presented by the proponents' engineer, that didn't talk specifically about stormwater, just talked about a 20-foot-wide easement for public utilities. But the applicant is here, and... So, Mr. Evans, the question is whether you would be comfortable granting the city a 20-foot-wide utility easement rather than a stormwater easement? And we don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
That's something I think we'd have to think about a little bit. It's not our intention, where this is going, to do any building, but you never know what happens in the future. The design for the, that's the wrong picture there, but the property is actually going to be going through the parking lot of where we plan to build some apartments on the one property, and then through the funeral home. We don't anticipate building there again, but you never know in the future. We weren't even sure if we wanted to go this way, to be truthful with you. And in spending some time talking with Steve Lang, there's some real issues of stormwater on there. In fact, it comes down 34th into our property and has caused damage. And when, as we talked about it, Steve suggested that, well, we have to come from 32nd up R and up 34th. It's going to cost us about a million dollars. And I've been trying to get the money for that for I don't know how long, and I've been working with him for three years on this project. And then we thought, well, possibly we could put this through that property. And I says, I was born and raised in Anacortes, this, like you were. And Anacortes means a lot to me, and certainly we're talking about a vacation too here, but we just thought it was a tremendous way to also gift back to the city about a million dollars. I don't know what it would mean for additional easement. What other things were you talking about putting through there, Ryan?
Well, my question was simply, if it is this 20-foot-wide easement, need it be restricted to stormwater, or could a water pipe also go through that?
Could a water pipe go through there?
Yeah, or something in the future.
I don't see any issue with that.
Fiber has been a thing that...
Yeah, and I wouldn't see any issue with that.
Right.
And I would like to also put a conduit through there to get some power to the lots that we have there as well. I know there has to be a certain three-foot distance between them or something like that according to future power. But for those items that you're talking about, I don't see an issue, just as long as I think the city does that. If you do put it in and you dig up all my parking lots, that we get it back together.
And I'm assuming that the easement would specify those types of things, that restoration would be on the city's dime always and that kind of thing. I just, I think there's a lot of value in making the language a little bit flexible.
I think that would be a wonderful idea. I have no objection for the city using that for something like that. I mean, if we can save more money in the city in doing something like that, let's do it.
Cool. I appreciate that. I do, I don't think that the portion to be vacated is a problem for us because it doesn't go anywhere. I have heard from at least one constituent who thought that that would be a great place for a community garden, and maybe it would, maybe it didn't, but it wouldn't be allowed in a rightaway because it's not a street purpose or a utility purpose. So it's sort of foreclosed on anyway. So I'm supportive of this if we can make some tweaks to that language. Or maybe it is the same language, since we don't have it in front of us. Maybe it is. That makes it make perfect sense to me.
And I don't see in the ordinance itself any language that restrict, that is restrictive, and maybe you can confirm that for me, Ms. Swetnam.
Mayor Miller.
Yeah, I think that's correct. The language that we put in the ordinance talks about a utility easement, not specifically just that it be for storm purposes. So, you know, I feel confident that we could work, it sounds like, with the applicant's team to come up with language and the easement that would accomplish all of those goals.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. You really answered my question, because I think that, you know, just from what I heard Mr. Walters said, and of course, Mr. Evans, that that sounds like that's the language that we could all live with and move forward. And I think the question for me would be if, do we want to bring this? me would be if, do we want to bring this back, or can we vote on this now in anticipation of that language being inserted in?
Yeah, the, the recommendation from staff is that, is that council move forward with the vacation. The way that we drafted the ordinance, the vacation is, you know, the ordinance can get adopted by council, but the actual vacation, i.e. transfer of ownership of the area to be vacated, is effective five days after the recording of the easement. So, you know, there wouldn't, wouldn't be any actual transfer until we work through the, you know, finalize the details of the easement, and, and we, you know, have fairly standardized utility easement language that we use, and, and we'll just make sure that the scope of that easement is drafted in a way that would allow for additional utility uses, but still confined to that 20-foot wide area that allows the applicant to move forward with the project they anticipate, so... I think I might have another slide here. Relevant code sections, 1250-130A requires compensation before vacation is effective. There is a provision in the code that allows for alternative compensation, 1250-135A, that allows for a transfer of a property interest in lieu of payment. And then, there are criteria in the code, 1250-110, that were added to the code within the past handful of years by council, that, that require council to consider whether a change of use or vacation will better serve the public, whether the street is no longer required for public use or public access, whether substituting a different public way would be more useful to the public, which often comes up in the case of trails, whether it would be more like, whether it will be likely needed in the future, and whether there are objections made by abutting property owners, other government agencies, or members of the public. To date, we haven't received any comments on this ordinance as, as staff, and again, the abutting property owners are all in common ownership and are the applicant. So, the, the mechanics of the vacation, we already touched on this, but again, the ordinance is effective upon the recording of the easement. The applicant provided the city with an appraisal of the values of the area to be vacated and the, the easement area. So the, the easement would, would go all the way from 34th Street to 32nd Street, and the appraisal identified that the value of that easement is approximately 71,600. The vacated area was appraised at around $40,000. So as Mr. Ray Oom noted, the city's getting more in, in value than it's giving up with the vacated area. And then, we talked about the fact that the easement will be prepared with a legal description by a professional land surveyor, and on a format approved by my office. And I know this is a public hearing, so I'm happy to step aside and allow any public comments.
And in addition to the land value also, our Public Works Department feels that the, the route of the stormwater will also be less expensive to, to... I see a head nod from Mr. Ray Oom. All right, this is open for public comment, if anybody wants to weigh in on this one. All right, council? Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Well, thank you for the clarification when it comes to whether it's just a stormwater or a utility easement. So as long as that is, works with the applicant, making sure that it stays within the 20 feet, I would think that if it, there's discussion of some other width, then that would have to come back to council. But it seems like a win-win, so I appreciate any time there's a property owner that is trying to work well with the city, so thank you for, for being proactive in this opportunity. So I move we adopt ordinance 4063, vacating right-ofway, in exchange for a utility easement as described in the attached petition.
Okay, motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Mr. McDougall, to approve ordinance 4063, Evans' vacation petition. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
Two points. First of all, the second recital mentions a section of code referencing the Board of Adjustment, but it no longer exists. So I think we should strike the second recital, and I move we amend the motion on the table to delete the second recital.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Mr. Walters, and a second by Ms. Moulton to delete the second recital, and we'll take that motion up first. Mr. Franci, any additional discussion on that deletion? Franciac, ready to take the vote on that one?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Heebick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the motion that is still before the council is a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, and a second by Mr. McDougall to approve the now amended ordinance 4063. Any additional discussion?
Mayor.
Make sure I didn't mess that up. Mr. Walters?
Well, two things. First of all, I think the recitals do a nice job of articulating the basis for our decision based on the criteria in the code, so I think that's, that's good. However, just a few minutes ago, we approved the revenue ordinance by waiving our two-read rule for ordinances, so it seems like we should still do that. So, I think we might be forgiven if we just move to approve a suspension of the rules for the purposes of waiving this two-read rule for this, and then circle back to the underlying motion.
Second?
Okay. Motion by Mr. Walters, and a second by Mr. Young. I was thinking that two-read rule might have been a 30-minute thing or something, but I'm kidding. All in favor of suspending the ordinance rule as proposed by Mr. Walters, second by Mr. Young, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries now, still a motion before the table, on, on the table is a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Mr. McDougall for 4063 as amended. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Heebick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good testing my ability to maintain the motions. Always appreciate that. Next up is item, Other Business, this is item 7A, and this is a newly added agenda item, and I will go ahead and ask Mr. Franciac to make sure to enter, the council should have received my letter of veto on the 15th of November, veto of ordinance 4062, adopting new AMC Chapter 2.08 regarding appoint of officers of the city, and as required by RCW, I had to specify my objections to the ordinance, and I'll just, council should have all that, and like I said, we'll enter that into the, that letter into the record, and the objections specifically were under-appointed officers removing the city engineer from, from the amended, from the ordinance as well, and removing the point about serving simultaneously one or more appointed officers, and no position, or any position substantially to city administrator may be created. The, on the interim appointments, changing three months to six months, and then employment contracts were... So that's to summarize, obviously you'll be able to read all that, and I know council's had an opportunity to read it, but I will turn it over to council for an expected motion.
I'm Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you. So on Wednesday, November 15th, the agenda packet from November 20th was published. That same afternoon, we, council received notice of mayor's veto, and the specific cause objections, which were provided to all of us. These objections were, have now been added to the agenda, but they had not been added to the agenda until this moment. So I'm glad, thank you, I was going to request that they were added, and that we proceed with reconsideration. How we handle reconsideration is identified in RCW 35A dot 12 dot 130. I would say that the objections noted in the veto are the same arguments presented by staff and the mayor at the November 6th meeting, and so I move to approve the previously approved ordinance number 4062, an ordinance adopting new AMC Chapter 2.08 regarding appoint of officers of the city. Just to note that it requires majority plus one of the whole membership to override a veto.
Second?
Okay, motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Ms. Moulton, to approve 4062 as previously adopted on the 6th of November. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Carter?
As I said before, I still don't understand why we can't take more time to discuss this, to hash out and get it figured out.
Any additional discussion? Okay, a motion by...
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young.
What I appreciated about the discussion we had last time, it was vigorous, of course, in their differing opinions as to approach and how this was. There was a lengthy discussion about whether it should be three months or six months, you know, how do we approach it as a committee? Again, you know, I would prefer just a little bit more time to process it. Quite honestly, after the mayor's veto, I, I'm scheduled to meet with him, and I just wanted to sort of discuss it, you know, just to see where we are in this process. Is there a compromise? Because I do think that even in the discussion we had at council, Mayor Miller indicated that maybe there's a, you know, he was willing to compromise on the three versus six months, and we went with three months. So, you know, there is room for us to figure this out, I guess. I just wish we had a little bit more time. Yes, I voted for the, the resolution, I did, and, you know, after the mayor's veto, I just wanted a moment to go back and speak with him about it, and just to sort of try to be clear, to understand his side of why this is important, and I've weighed heavily on this, and I believe that there's a reason we're pushing forward the resolution. There are reasons for it, given the discussion we're having, but I really wanted to have a good conversation with the mayor about it, and I wasn't expecting it on this agenda, and quite honestly, I'm due to speak with the mayor tomorrow, and I hope I'm not saying something, but I wanted to be able to talk with him about this issue. So, you know, quite honestly, I'm not ready to move forward tonight, and because there are things that I think that we're trying to, we hope to accomplish, and I think that there are reasons that the council believes that some of these initiatives are necessary at this moment, and as I've said before, particularly given what we have witnessed at the port taking place, and what we do know or don't know about that, and then there are some allegations to come forward. So, you know, we're, we're following through on those things to come up with some conclusions of fact, but in the middle of all of that, as we await for the conclusions of fact, you know, I, I do think that I have an obligation to sort of speak with the mayor personally about, to try to understand where we are, what it means, and what his views for, before I make any decision. So that's my only hesitation. I agree that there are some steps to be taken, but I'm not sure if that has anything to do with Mayor Miller or not. It has to do with the state of where we are as a people, the, the question of control and communication. Council is clearly saying that it wants more communication between the administration and us in making decisions, because we're unified by that. That's what this is part of, and so it's, I don't believe that it's a sinister approach to undermine the mayor. The question is, does it, and why? And so we have answers, questions, and things that we're doing to try to investigate and come up with a solution. So, you know, again, I wasn't prepared for this to come up tonight. Quite honestly, I am meeting with the mayor tomorrow to sort of discuss, you know, his veto and why, and to discuss why I felt that parts of the resolution were absolutely appropriate, but it has nothing to do with any antagonistic view of the mayor, trying to undermine the mayor. It's just that the need for communication and guarantee that that process goes forward. And so, tonight, I am not, personally, I want to have that conversation before I move forward, but again, I am but one of seven members of this council, and, and I respect every single one of them as being smart, intelligent, people that care about this community, and are giving their absolute best to ensure that the best foot of our city goes forward. And so sometimes that means we may differ on whether it's three months or six months, but I want to understand that before I'm making the decision, and there are hard decisions we make as council that would never appeal to everybody. No one ever comes up with a solution that everybody believes that we all went on. Because of that, I honestly believe that I want to have my conversation with Mayor Miller to try to understand those things. So that's my position on where we are, and that doesn't mean that I, that I disagree with some of the things being put forward in 4062. It doesn't mean that. What it means is that I owe the mayor the obligation to hear him out, and to understand his reasoning for believing that this limits where we are as a community. Whether or not we agree or disagree, I want all of the facts, and I want to ingest them before I vote my conscience on what that is, and that, you know, you can take or leave, it is the truth of what I believe. So, with all due respect for my fellow council members, and with this deference to having a better understanding of this question and answer, you know, I, I want to have that, because I honestly, I was not anticipating it being on council's agenda tonight, and my meeting with the mayor is scheduled for tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll just, for the public's awareness, my, my issue is a lot about process here, and it is very common in municipalities to always have a, a healthy tension, hopefully being disagreeable, disagree without being disagreeable, but the healthy tension is typically management decisions versus policy decisions, so that's where a lot of this tension is coming from. Management decisions, if you don't like my management, you get to deal with that in two years, but policy decisions are separate, and I was talking about elections. But we do have a motion before the council by Ms. Cleland McGrath, and a second by Ms. Moulton.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
One of the reasons to move this forward sooner rather than later is, of course, that one of the primary motivations for moving this forward at all is to ensure the structure of city government, and to ensure that the structure includes an HR director, and that informs the budget process. So, I think quite a few of us expressed support for consideration of a, a six-month window for interim appointments without council confirmation, instead of a three-month window for interim appointments without council confirmation. The import of that is maybe a little unclear, because if you go beyond three months, you simply need to ask for council confirmation, and most of the appointments, almost every single one of the appointments in the last four years has been achieved within a three month window, permanent appointments. But this ordinance also need not be the end-all, be-all on this subject. So for example, one of the mayor's objections was the prohibition on a city administrator. Now, there very well could come a time in the history of Anacortes where it's appropriate for us to consider a city administrator. It may make sense. The ordinance specifically says we can do that, we just amend the code to make that happen, and in the absence of amending the code, the city council should be approving the position and approving the budget for it as well. However, that doesn't 100% of the time happen, so that's why we want, you know, to make that very clear in the ordinance, and have a prohibition on that in the ordinance until such time as we amend the code. So those things can be resolved later. So those things can be resolved later. Those constraints can be changed later as they tend to, you know, make more or less sense. The code is a living document. But what we ought to achieve very soon, maybe tonight, maybe not tonight, is consensus and approval of the structure of the city government.
Other discussion? Mr. Franciac, call for the vote, please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
No.
Mr. Young.
This is far more difficult than I really wanted it to be, but for the reasons I stated earlier in this conversation, I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. We will move on to item now seven, numbered seven B. It's an interlocal agreement, Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center. This is a discussion item with possible action. And Ms. Wetnam, given her enough time to come over there and introduce our guest, this is open for public comment. And it's going to be followed up by a resolution, a proposed resolution thirty-one thirty-seven.
Thanks, Mayor Miller. Members of council, so I'm introducing a guest to speak about the next two agenda items which really go hand in hand. The Fidalgo Parks and Recreation District approached the city and asked the city to adopt a resolution placing upcoming proposition on a ballot to create a Metropolitan Park District. And so that's the resolution piece of it. The interlocal agreement, because the county, the city will be placing it on the ballot, Mr. Hoagland and I spoke with the elections manager, and they said that because it was the city placing it on the ballot, the city would be responsible for materials and potentially election costs. So the interlocal agreement is just to clarify that the district, which is already budgeted for the election-related costs, would bear those costs. So with that, I am happy to introduce Rob Peterson, who's the executive director, and he's going to address both of these issues.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll pull this up here real quick. So to hopefully at least help me talk. So again, Rob Peterson, Executive Director, Fidalgo Pool and Fitness District. I also have Commissioner McNett with me as well as a backup if there's some questions. So just real quickly, like she stated, trying to create a Metropolitan Parks and Rec District. We've got just a little bit of history on where we're at, that we are a Parks and Rec District that is separate from the city, doesn't receive any funding from the city. It was originally formed in nineteen seventy-five. The current boundary is set to where the school district was in nineteen seventy-five, which is all of Fidalgo Island, not including the Swenomish Indian Reservation. And it is currently funded by an operations levy that must go to the voters every six years in order to continue on. That is about half of our budget. The other half of our budget, the actual operations, are paid for through user fees to pay for those operations. The levy pays for, like I said, the maintenance, the maintenance, the utilities, the maintainer salary to make sure that that's taken care of. It is led by five elected commissioners that go to the vote every four years in a rotating fashion. Right now, we are a facility that the community comes to recover from health issues and to socialize. We have swimmers as young as six months that we start swimming. Our oldest patron right now is ninety-eight. So we're still active and bringing us there. People have learned to walk through the aquatic therapy that we have available in the facility, maintain their health through strength equipment and programs. We've expanded over the years to increase the activities that we have available. We also service the school district swim teams, their meets, plus we have two swim teams that we manage. One is for youth under the age of eighteen, and then we also have an adult master swim team that competes in events. So on a given day, up to dozen patrons of canes, walkers, wheelchairs use the fitness center and pool. We talked about that, average of about four hundred youth from six through the teenage, generally younger, but they learn to swim annually. So we're increasing our swim lessons as well, providing that safety. We also provide the babysitter courses in order to do, again, some life safety issues for kids. You have to be a lifeguard in order to teach the class by Red Cross standards, so it's one of the few places you can get that. Because of those swim meets and different events, we do create some business for the local hotels, stores, shops, restaurants, and such when we have those events. They're multi-day events usually. So why am I here? We're trying to propose a Metropolitan Park District that would replace our current Parks and Rec District. It would now match the boundaries of the current Anacortes School District, so it would expand out slightly. And I've got a map here to kind of help that out. We would still be funded by that, by the levy that comes from the Metropolitan Parks and Rec District and user fees, so it wouldn't change that setup. And we would still be elected, have five elected officials and commissioners to run the district, separate from the city, just like we were. So the boundary comparison here, it's a little hard to see from the county, but the one on the left is where we are now, so just all of Fidalgo Island. The one on the right, there's a little bit of pink there and some of the islands, so it will extend out a little bit into some of the other islands around the area to match the, like I said, the school district. So what will it do? It'll still keep the district separate from the city. It'll allow us as a district some financial stability. So one of the, one of the main things that a Metropolitan Parks and Rec District does is it puts it in perpetuity. So it will remove our requirement to go out every six years for a levy. That will help us as we're trying to finance projects with banks right now, every six years. And if we go to a bank and they don't know we're going to be around, it's a little hard to get them to finance if they don't know there. So that'll give us some advantages there. It will not change, just like with you all, with the city requirements and funding and levy requirements, we're still limited by the 1% increase per year, so we can't jump the levy rates around. So we still have that same requirement, just like any other taxing district does. We keep our same leadership and oversight, we're still elected by people, but it will realign the boundaries. What it won't do is it will not fund a new facility. If we go out to get the new facility, it will have to go back to voters for additional funding for that. But it, like I said, it will set that good foundation, whether we stay with the current facility or move to a new facility. It will not change the way the districts manage, and it will not add a new taxing district because it's going to replace the Parks and Rec District that we have right now. And that's what I have. I got backup slides for pictures if anybody really wanted to see them, but.
All right, any questions for Mr. Peterson? And actually, this is open for a public comment as well. Any members of the public want to jump in on this one? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Now, I had the pleasure of meeting with both of the representative here, you know, I've got a call, and I wanted to sort of see what this was about, and it seemed to be well thought out. I mean, the attention to detail, we love our pool, and it's been here, you know, and I think that the struggles to upgrade it, upgrade the facility and the use and the utility is just so important. And I really appreciated what you guys brought forward. And I will confess that I've also been a user of the pool for my rehab from, you know, bad accident. And so, you know, the pool was just, you know, amazing for me. I had never used it before. And so, you know, part of that, when I look at the various people that use our pool for a whole variety of reasons, its location is between the schools and such a wonderful spot. And so, and I just think that the challenge in getting the resources necessary or even the idea to move forward has been challenging in past years. But what I'm encouraged by is that the people you've assembled together, the hard work you guys have put into this, so, you know, I'm very much in favor of this. I think that it bodes well for our city, and I just think it's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
So I did come up with a question, and sorry, I'm not going to try to stump you like the old days. So how will it change the commissioners? Will it change the commissioners at all? Obviously, it opens up, opens up more area for elected commissioners.
They're all open elections. We have the five commissioners, they're not, I don't, we don't have them right now by a certain location, so it's an all, all open.
So.
And there'll still be five, and it'll be up for election between those five, so.
But obviously, you will be able to draw from a larger area.
We will be able to draw from a larger area. So it's possible that we get some other ones. And the initial, as this, if this passes and we get it onto the ballot, on that same ballot is the, is the vote for the initial five commissioners. They have to be done at the exact same time.
Oh, okay. Great. That's very informative. Thank you. Okay, and we do have a member of the public that.
Connie Miller, Anacortes. I just had a question about the levy, I want to make sure I understand, by doing the Metropolitan Park District, did I hear you clearly in that the levy, where there'll be no more levies required and that it will be a permanent taxing, expanded taxing district? Is that correct?
So yes, it's a, it's a in perpetuity, so it's, it just doesn't have to go back every six years, it's in perpetuity. You would still have the 1%, and if we ever had to go above that 1% increase, we would have to go back to the voters, just like the city just did in order to get a levy lifted up in order to increase it.
I just want to add a comment about that. I understand that that would be probably more helpful to the pool, and I totally support the pool, it's great. However, a levy is the, my understanding, one of the few recourses citizens have to weigh in on whether they support or want to continue some of these things. So I would be cautionary about removing that ability for citizens to continue, to have a say in how these tax dollars are used in our community.
All right. Any other questions? Yep, okay, come on up.
Connie Russell, Anacortes. I'm wondering, is there an offset to, say, the county tax levy once we establish this Metropolitan Park District? I see this as another tax. The property owners have experienced 30% increase over the last two years in property values. The council and the citizens approved this levy increase to 1.34, et cetera. Now we're talking about another tax district, which a levy and a 1% ability to increase. I just would like to know if there's any offsets here, either through the budget from the city, the council? Where are we going with all this?
Do you want to take a stab at that?
Yes, I'll take a clarification. So just, the, there is a, the current Parks and Rec District is a current taxing district. And so we are part of your property tax now. If this Metropolitan Parks and Rec District passes there, it, that would come off, and this other one would go in its place. So there is, there is an offset from this going on.
Geographic expansion of the taxing district. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I think as a general matter, we are dealing with maybe a much better plan than we have in the last few years. Several of us sat on a council committee that interacted with a committee from the pool about, this was all pre-COVID, what course the pool would take forward, would it include a community center or a youth center? Some of those constraints ended up with a plan that required you to tear down the pool and not have a pool for a couple of years while you were building a new pool. I understand your new plans for a new pool do not have that problem. But this item that's before us tonight is simply a mechanical thing that I think maybe as was said lays the groundwork for success. I do think it makes sense to have a stable levy rate, and arguably it will be more stable than it would be under the existing system where you could propose a higher rate every six years. The 1% increase, obviously less than inflation, you're still losing ground all the time in real dollars. And eventually, it becomes more and more difficult to do the maintenance on the pool. So I think that as a, as a general matter, what we have in front of us tonight is simply an agreement to later do work, to put this on the ballot in front of the voters, and I think that makes sense. I would note two other things, and the statute does allow for another mechanism for governance of the pool district, and that is that the city and county could share governance and we could do away with you elected pool commissioners. I'm not advocating that. But certainly, it, you know, there are a couple of things that remain to be figured out after we pass this in our local because we got to prepare the ballot language. The second thing is, you know, what about the new pool? Because we all want to get to the, to the new pool. And the new pool maybe is what, a 30 million, a 40 million? What's your rough guess?
My rough guess right now would probably be about 55 million.
55 million. So that far exceeds the statutory authority of a Metropolitan Park District to levy or to bond the new pool. So as, as you said, you would have to go out to the voters in order to do a public bond for that amount. If you have other donations, you know, maybe that bond amount is smaller, but still, any bond amount in anywhere, anywhere in that neighborhood would require another public vote. So we're not authorizing that right now. We're not even contemplating that right now. And we don't have to worry about that because that's something that will be addressed later and would have to go to another vote. So I'm in favor of moving this interlocal forward and getting the ball started. There are quite a few steps more to go just to get this, this smaller mechanical step done.
And I just want to clarify that 55 million is a very rough guess. We're not very far into the design, we've got conceptual, so there's a lot of wiggle room in that number still.
We didn't, we didn't think that was an engineer's estimate for you, but appreciate that. So I'm not sure if that was a motion, Mr. Walters?
It was not.
Okay.
I didn't know if others wanted to contribute discussion before.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with the Fidalgo Parks and Recreation District for allocations of election-related responsibilities.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hubig and a second by Mr. Young to approve resolution thirty-one thirty-seven, authorizing the interlocal agreement for Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center. Any additional discussion? Franciac?
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
Was that, are we voting on the resolution or the interlocal agreement?
I'm sorry, the interlocal. Thank you for the correction. Interlocal agreement, Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center. And that was the motion and the second. Thank you for the clarification. Take the vote, please.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, item seven C, this is the resolution thirty-one thirty-seven, Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center. Is there any more we have to do there? I'm looking at.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So with this resolution, we would be setting the ballot language, and we would be committing to the five pool commissioners and not the alternative structures where we run the pool jointly with the county. And we can all imagine how fun that would be. What I like about the ballot language that you've proposed in the resolution is that it does explicitly say that if approved, the new district would replace the existing Fidalgo Parks and Recreation District. I don't know that that's required to be in the ballot language, but it makes it very clear to the voters that this district is a change in form, more or less. It's a new district that very explicitly removes the former district. And I see no problems with the resolution as presented.
Any more questions on the resolution? Apologize for jumping ahead there on thirty-one thirty-seven.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I guess it looks like we don't really have any additional questions, commentary, so I move to adopt resolution thirty-one thirty-seven as presented.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubig to adopt resolution thirty-one thirty-seven. Any additional discussion? Mr. Walters.
Just one little data point. The assessed value of the property within the city of Anacortes, which is, is not the current boundaries of the pool district, the current boundaries are Fidalgo Island, but the assessed value within the city of Anacortes is 6.3 billion dollars. In the school district, the assessed value is more like 9 billion dollars. So granted, you're going from larger than just the city to begin with, but you will be spreading around that maintenance and operations cost to. be spreading around that maintenance and operations cost to a significantly larger pool of property owners and property values than is contained purely within the city of Anacortes, which I think is a good thing for property owners in the city and outside the city on the rest of Fidalgo Island.
Okay, so, a motion by Mr. McDougal, second by Ms. Hubig for 3137. Any other discussion? Mr. Francie Ick?
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to item, thank you very much, Ms. Peterson. Okay, we're on to item 7D, contract award, AMI, monopole antenna installation, water meter, meter reading project. This is a discussion item, this is a contract award, a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a contract with a contractor called Vicor in the amount of $281,313.28 to install four poles, which would be a wooden pole with a receiver on the top of the pole. What happens is that we are installing meters that have a radio that signals to the pole and then that kind of backfeeds back to City Hall so we can in real time detect whether somebody has a water leak issue. That's kind of the best thing that for the public. It also just gives them real time. We're not monitoring, they can go in and monitor actually. You can set up notifications and if you want to know those things, it'll email you, that type of thing. We need these poles to make it all work. We went out to bid and we received two unresponsive bids, so we switched gears and then asked Vicor to give us an estimate, which our engineering estimate was 400,000, so this is significantly less than that. And that's it, though, just, it's a 75-foot wood pole with a fiberglass receiver at the top. And that's all I had to, to present tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Rayum? Mr. Walters?
I was originally somewhat skeptical of this project because of the cost of the project overall compared to the expected benefit, but we're quite a ways into it now. And we've had quite a few discussions in the public work, in the Public Works Committee that lead me to believe that probably it makes sense despite its, its cost, notably because we had to replace our water meters anyway. So I move that we authorize the mayor to execute the contract as presented.
Second?
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton. Any additional discussion? We do have one of these operating already, a similar type system, so we're, proof of concept is, is well on its way. And, Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. The, the only point was just a little bit in follow-up to Mr. Walters. You know, we, and I do believe at one point Ms. Cleland McGrath had some questions, but it was just a question of cost and as it was adding up. And I think that, you know, again, we came to a conclusion that we were deep in and it would be something that would benefit us. And so the length of discussion was had, and I'm very much in support. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I make a, can I make a comment?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Rayum.
Okay. I just wanted to say a lot of cities have gone this direction, or utilities, I should say. It does have a lot of cost savings on having staff go out and read meters and that type of thing. So I don't know if we've done the analysis, but I've seen the analysis done in other utilities. It's usually cost-effective. Like, Customer Walter said, you have to replace the meters anyway, so as we do that, we upgrade it to the most, this current technology. And it just, it, I've seen it be a cost benefit plus in other cities. I don't know if we did that here, wasn't here to do that. So it should be, it should actually save you money over the long run.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
In, in this case, we did have that analysis presented to us, and the avoided cost of the meter reading really wasn't that significant, but you already have to pay to replace the meters and you get added benefits, leak detection, those kinds of things. So that, I think, pushed us over the edge.
I think of additional value to the, the end, the end customer, kind of push it over the top. Okay, still have a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton, I think that was correct. Mr. Francie Ick?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are on to item seven now, if I re-letter this correctly, E. And this is Public Works Committee Recommendations, and luckily we have the Public Works Director stand, still standing there. Mr. Rayum?
Still ready. So I always feel bad when I open a presentation and it's covering up Councilmember Moulton, but I'm going to try...
Please do.
Okay. I think you come back after it opens here. Nope, you don't get, can you see that, Councilmember Moulton?
Um, I can't. I can see you at the podium, though.
Think if we're able to change the podium view, that works. I can't remember how we accomplished this last time.
Is it when you do this? No, that's bad. How about now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, he'll do it from up there, okay. Okay, here we go. So just for the public's knowledge, so the city has a Public Works Committee, and one of the side assignments to that committee is, is a safety committee, which is, in this case, tonight's got a lot about parking requests that have come from the public. We meet on a quarterly basis. There's three councilmembers, the Public Works Management and myself, all meet to discuss requests from the public, whether it's a safety issue or if it's a parking issue, and we come up with a recommendation. As I understand, this is unusual for us to come to the full council with the recommendations, but I'm, that's what I'm used to, so I just wanted to do that and make sure that, you know, because some of these things have been declined, and I just want to make sure the full council is in agreement with the committee so that we can speak to these things publicly so that the public can hear what the, the thought process was behind the approval or the decline on the request, so...
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
To provide just a little bit more background, first of all, we rewrote the entirety of our parking code earlier this year, and most of these requests, I think, came in during the rewrite process and during the time at which we were soliciting public comment. And we decided that they required some additional review other than what we were doing, which was mostly the mechanics of the parking code and some bigger ticket items. So we deferred that action until now, and it was also the judgment of the committee that we didn't want to act as a filter for City Council, because City Council is the entity in charge of amending the code, not the committee. So we wanted all of the recommendations to come forward to City Council so that we can, first of all, either confirm a recommendation and then staff can go write the ordinance to address it, or decline it and have council as a whole make that decision and then take no further action.
So we were going to go stepwise through these, so I'm going to be looking for kind of head nods or, you know, if you have, if you don't agree with the recommendation, please speak up and so we can get an idea where the, the full council is at on each one. So, and the mayor is going to try to help me make sure that we do keep track of this.
Try to keep tabs as we move forward.
So we did do a real basic presentation just to show you an aerial view of each of these, and so we're just going to go stepwise through them, and there's eight of them, so bear with us. So the first one was a request for Sands Way, the request is to change the parking to a two-hour limit due to a lack of parking spots. The committee reviewed this application, they went out there and actually did some measurements to try to estimate how many parking stalls, or parking spots, sorry, there are. I don't know if the cursor, oh, it does work. Can you see that, Councilmember Moulton, if I move the cursor around?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So this is the area in question here, it's along the, the private park here, both sides of the street, there is available parking. We estimated there's about 90 parking spots on the road total. The road is 36 feet wide, which allows for two driving lanes and two parking lanes. And so to move it to a two-hour parking, we felt that was not necessary at this time, and we therefore did not agree, we do not recommend moving forward with marking this as a two-hour parking area.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Specifically, the request was to provide an area of more limited parking so that people could drop off kids at the park. But I think the committee thought that a two-hour parking limit doesn't really accomplish drop-off. It maybe allows parents to go with kids to the park, but there is also a parking lot for the park to the south there. And Public Works' strong recommendation was, you know, we need street parking spots, and there are a lot of them here.
And then, Mayor, I don't know if you want to take public comment, but we did have an asterisk on this, so if you want to do public comment on each one, or how do you want to work that?
Yeah, I guess probably on each one, because I know there's at least one member of the public said they were kind of coming to address their particular issue. So if you're here when we get to it, I'll take your comment.
So Sands Way, anybody? Come on up.
Oh, okay, yeah. And name in the city, please. You can pull it right down, it, it's fine.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's Marilyn Sage, and I live on Parkside out in Skyline. The other issue that may have not been addressed is that's also a bus lane, and it's also a school bus lane and a public transit lane. So when you have two cars parked on each side of it, you're just getting a bus through it, you're not getting another car through it. You also couldn't get a, if you had an emergency vehicle coming down at the same time as the bus and both sides are parked, you're not going to get them, you're going to get them meeting up. And there was one other issue that I had, but it wasn't that. Oh, the only other issue is I've noticed that since they've put 72-hour parking there, that they did not yellow curb the, the water hydrant or the bus drop, we have two parking, two bus pickups, pickup sites. None of those have been yellow curbed, so people just park in front of them, including the hydrant. So it makes it a little dangerous. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else on Sands Way? All right, council, concurrence with the recommendation?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
The input from staff is that the roadway is wide enough for two travel lanes and two parking lanes, so that's what we've been operating off of. I wonder if our Public Works Director might address the hydrant curb painting and the bus pickup spots.
So, yes, so we don't typically paint curbs where there's a hydrant. Most people know you do not park in front of a hydrant. We do paint yellow curbs where, sometimes where there's a, an entry, so people don't park, you know, right on the edge of the, the entry into a, the driveway, if you will, off of the road. But typically, we don't also do that with bus stops. Bus stops are usually, well, they're run by the county, and they do not typically mark their bus stops as well.
We, we can definitely check on, on that, though, just to make sure we're consistent throughout the city.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
And we did amend our parking code in such a way as that it should be easier to enforce and maybe more palatable to enforce, including things like parking in front of hydrants. I'm sympathetic to the view that we shouldn't paint every curb yellow because that's a lot of paint. But people need to not park in front of fire hydrants, and there are a variety of other locations that people are not allowed to park in, and so Public Works or any citizen could report that to APD and APD could take care of that. They usually start with a warning, and then some of our fine amounts are very slight to begin with, to make, make it clear to people before really hammering them. But it's important, so I would encourage people to reach out.
Thank you, Councilmember Walters. I was, I was going to mention that as well. I talked to the chief today, and he said to kind of repeat during this whole thing, if we do see people parking illegally, to do contact the police department, and they will come out and address it.
All right, ready to move on to the next one? Okay.
Okay, next one is Coho Lane. So what we were, what was reported is that along Coho Lane, people are parking their trailers after they launch their boats. We do have a parking lot that is a pay lot for people to park their boats in, and what unfortunately we think is happening is people are using free parking in these neighborhoods instead. So we have not only approved the request to add no trailer parking to Coho Lane, we want to extend that so that we alleviate the problem to Gear Lane, Pacific Avenue, Sunset Avenue, and Storm Place. And then that we, that will require an amendment to the municipal code 10.12 to add those streets to the no trailer parking list.
So, yeah, for the, so for the mechanics, if council you're good with this, then we'll bring back those code amendments.
Great idea.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, for this one, we wanted to make it clear that we do not want our parks facility, Washington Park, to be an impact on neighbors. Is Washington Boulevard already in the code as, as no trailer parking? Because I don't see that on your, your list.
It's not wide enough to park a trailer on it, is what I'm staff...
I think you're broad blocking.
So, so we need not worry about it, then? Or we don't want to?
That's what we believe. I mean, I can double check. I don't, I don't have the code handy, but, because of that median, that you park a trailer in there and it's, there's, cars can't get past them.
Okay.
But that's certainly something we could check on when we, if, when we bring back that code amendment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if it, if it's not in there, we could add it to the code amendment and take it out, or whatever you guys want to do.
Anybody from the public want to talk about Coho? All right. Okay, so it sounds like bringing it, bringing it back and see some head nods. Okay, next.
All right, number three is 17th and Georgia, so the concern is that this road right here, people apparently were parking on it. We have been monitoring this to see if people are parking on it. We haven't seen anybody yet. The request was to, 17th and Georgia, add no parking signs from the intersection of 17th and Georgia to the straightaway on 17th Street, so that's down here. So there'd be no parking signs all along this. The committee recommends to take no action on, on the code change or the signage. The road width is similar to what we were talking about, Washington Boulevard. It is not a place where somebody should be parking a vehicle, so again, APD would be a good resource to call if somebody does actually park there. Signing it, we just didn't feel like would really, would make any effect if somebody's parking there anyways without the sign. They should know better than to park in a narrow, windy road, steep road like that. So that's the committee recommendation, is to not sign it?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I'm kind of hesitant on this one because there were people that were pretty concerned about this, and it's, if it's an issue, it's a safety issue, it seems. Is there an alternative to signing curb painting? If we were to make it no parking?
Alternative as in, like, other than calling the police if somebody parks there, or?
Well, if it's, if it's not in the code as no parking, what are the police going to do about it?
Probably educate the driver that that is not a safe place to park their vehicle, for their vehicle nor the general public, is what we were thinking.
Uh-huh. So my, my question is, if we were to put it in the code as no parking, is an alternative to signage, simply painting the curb? Because signs are, you got to maintain them and they fade over time, but is an alternative painting the curb has some similar problems, but?
If we were, yeah, we were going to do something, I'd probably recommend a sign because painting is, you know, it's a, it's a lot more maintenance than a, than a sign is.
Okay.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I just want to speak in favor of no action now and continue to monitor it.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
I, I agree. I think we discussed this at length in, in our meeting, and I think just sort of the review of all of the options that were there, we came up with the best option at this moment was no action, so that's where I am as well.
Okay, I'm seeing some head nods there.
Anybody from the public on this one?
All right, keep, keep going.
All right, keep them going. So K Way, this was a request to change the code from a 72-hour, so 72-hour is our default. We don't sign that, it's just the default parking maximum that people can have throughout the city unless it's signed otherwise. The request was to, I lost my spot there, to reduce it to a 24-hour... The request was to, I lost my spot there, to reduce it to a 24-hour parking area and add signage to the street. The recommendation of the committee is to take no action on code changes or signage and forward the issue to Anacortes Police Department. From what I understand, the police chief was aware of K Way and then there's some issues amongst neighbors there that the signs really aren't going to help. It's, it's more of a, a situation where they just need to kind of sort things out amongst themselves about where people park and utilize docks.
Well, I'm going to jump in with a public service announcement that we do have a halftime parking enforcement officer now on staff. And he's doing his job well. So I'm, Mr. Walters.
I think the thinking of the committee here also was that there may be many neighborhoods that would like to have 24-hour parking instead of 72-hour parking. But our default is 72. And do we want to start making the code more complicated and requiring different signage and time periods all over town? I think our answer is no. If 72 hours is not the right default, maybe we change the default. But nobody's suggesting that either at this point. So our, our sense, I think, as a committee was this should be left alone. And maybe the problem is people parking more than 72 hours, not 24, and just handle that part with enforcement.
I'm seeing some head nods on that. Okay, on?
Should we check the public?
Oh, check the public. K Way, where are my K Way residents? No? Okay.
The next one is Sixth Street between T Avenue and Market Street. The request was to add diagonal parking on the north side of Sixth. The original recommendation from the committee was to, yes, go ahead and amend the municipal code and paint down angled parking. We went out since then and took measurements and we cannot fit angled parking in with two travel lanes. So the staffer, well, the committee's recommendation was to go ahead with it. And the staff would recommend we do not do that because we do not have the right-of-way width to install angled parking.
I'm glad the recommendation wasn't back in angled parking.
Yeah, that's, that's not a very popular one.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
We had that discussion and I believe it was ruled out. But also this, this would create more parking for the Farmer's Market and the depot and the uses there. Is there, is there more room within the right-of-way if we expanded the pavement? Which is not something we would do right now because that requires money more, much more so than just changing the code and changing the striping. But is that something that we should pursue or at least consider in the future as a, as a independent project?
It does seem that, if you can see my cursor there, this area right here is just vegetation with some trees in it. So we could expand that. I mean, they just poured this new curb, the port did. It'd be awful to tear that out and widen it. But on the other side though, we could look at that at a future date. They are actually rebuilding this, this corner here as part of this bigger project to do the RV park, the port is. So anyhow, so, so yeah, we could look at that in the future. There's, there is some room.
And one of the considerations was you don't park an RV in diagonal parking. And we don't want RVs coming from anywhere, but also spilling out of the port RV park. And then parallel parking on that street and getting a free ride. It's sort of, kind of similar to the Washington Park example. So it may be worth looking at in the future.
Yeah, we could definitely look at, look at that in the future.
I'd be interested in knowing, you know, order of magnitude, how much that would cost.
You good with this?
Six Street, I've, I've had some folks reach out to me about this street. Oh, okay, come on up.
Barbara Smart, Anacortes. This, I have no skin in this thing, but if I'm a merchant and I'm in the Farmer's Market and I have a panel truck and I have to park it. Now, when you, when you go to the Farmer's Market, you see all those big trucks and vans that are, a lot of them are the merchants that are at the Farmer's Market. So are you, I mean, and also, when I tried to get there and I didn't realize the road was shut, trying to find a place to park made it interesting. But can you make any decision on this thing until all the port has rearranged this whole area? So, but anyway, you have to take into consideration that a lot of those merchants and the people who do come there have those big trucks and they have to be put somewhere. And generally, we park, that's my parking spot is around that street right there. Because I know I can come a certain direction, I can still find a place to park. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Okay, any more on the Sixth Street discussion? All right. You getting what you need?
Yep, I'm getting what I need. This is another part of Sixth Street across the, this is the Gwemyss Ferry Terminal right here. There is a Gwemyss Ferry weighty holding area right here. It's painted. You can see these hash marks for people's driveways, driveways, sorry, so that people do not park and so you can't get in and out of your driveways. The request was to extend the Gwemyss Ferry Channel holding area across this block as well. And I believe the committee was, thought that was a great idea. And so we, staff went out to measure it and once again, we do not have the right-of-way to create the, the holding lane. There's not enough room for the lane. There's only six feet and vehicles are typically wider than six feet. So we didn't want to, we recommend that we do not proceed with extending the ferry lane. There was a question about hashing the actual driveway so people don't park, because people still park there anyways. And apparently in front of people's driveways, that's something that if council wanted to, we could kind of look at that. The hash marks would be kind of odd because there isn't a lane stripe that kind of determines of it, what you typically see when you're trying to hash out, you know, a driveway. So if that makes sense. I'm getting a brow over there. If that makes sense, okay. So yeah, so the, the committee did recommend moving forward with it and the staff went out and measured it. And we don't believe we have enough space to create the holding lane.
And I trust the committee did warn you that every Gwemyss Ferry haul-out maintenance period, we, we, we run through this particular area every time to try to figure out ways to do traffic flow and parking.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's tough. There's not a lot of holding area. And I understand during summer, there's more people than the holding area can fit, so.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
My constituents here brought this issue up and obviously you can't park in front of a driveway. So they're going to call APD if we don't have some mechanism to prevent Gwemyss Ferry vehicles, who only show up on that block in the summer. I mean, we don't need extension of the ferry lane most of the year. But they are extending the ferry lane in the summer, striped or not, width or not. They keep backing up, you know, as, as far down as necessary in the summertime. And assumedly, that's only going to get worse. So we may want to put this on a longer-term plan to figure out if we can achieve more width there. I'm not sure how that would be possible, but it's an issue. But in the near term, I would strongly encourage Public Works to figure out something. Maybe it's hashing, maybe it's something else, I don't know, to very clearly indicate that those driveways cannot be parked in front of. I mean, I would, if someone parked in front of my driveway and I couldn't get out and it was the only way to get out, I'd be calling a tow truck. So we should try hard to figure out a way to eliminate that conflict. And it might be sufficient to simply stripe the parking strip.
In front of their driveway?
Right.
Okay.
Not, not out into the drive lane, but simply the, the parking strip in front of the driveway.
Sometimes people paint yellow, the sides of the curb ramp, you know, the sides of the ramp to their driveway, which is something, and this is another one the chief said, just to have them call. Because they'll come, if you're blocking somebody's driveway, that's even worse than leaving your car.
Which is great, but, you know, towing a car is something we want to avoid if we can. And there will be a whole bunch of cars in the way of towing that car. So something short of that would be great if we could find a solution.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I'm also sure it's on your radar, but I just want to point out and remind everybody that there is going to be a new electric Gwemyss Ferry at some point in the near future that will hold more cars and more passengers than what we currently have. So this problem is definitely not going to go away anytime soon and may filter over into times that are not summer.
Yeah, this is, this is probably similar to that other one where we could move the, you know, on Sixth, the other side of Sixth. And we move the curb back. And so there, we need about two more feet to go into their yards to create the ferry lane. That sounds like maybe something the county should look at, just saying, but. So their recommendation is to do nothing at this time. We could look at it from a capital investment estimate and bring that back to the, for the 2025 budget, capital facilities budget. To let you guys know what your options are there. Sound good?
Mr. Walters.
But will you also consider a, a simple striping fix for these driveways near term?
Yeah, we'll try to look at that. We'd have to create like a box around it too and stuff. We'll just need to think it through. Because the, the striping makes a lot more sense when you have a, a full line across, you know, the whole street.
Right.
This would be kind of a box just sitting there, so.
It might work though.
Oh, we could do it. Yeah, just, it might be the prettiest thing, but we could do, we could paint anything. But we could try truth of concept too and just try one driveway. If they hate it, then we'll not do it again.
All right, so do I have some neighbors in this area that want to weigh in on this one? Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
Is that, I mean, I know this is getting in the weeds, but is there a way for it to loop north along K and then along Fifth Street? If there's less, I, I guess I just don't know how, how far it backs up. Is it from K to L? Or is it beyond that? And could you wrap it around the corner of Sixth and K and then north to Fifth Street? Just since there's less entrances onto the street? Except for those two parking lots, which are kind of busy parking lots that have a lot of cars on them. I don't know. I'm just trying to think of other ways when there's major overflow.
I really like the idea Councilmember Hubick brought up to engage the county about this since it is their facility and it's woefully undersized at this point, especially if they're getting a bigger ferry that can hold more vehicles. So I'd probably start there and just kind of see where they're at. They're probably, I think we know the answer will be.
So we can help them.
Yeah. But this time we're recommending no action. We'll try the, we'll try a little demo hashed out parking, paint driveways.
Got it.
Sound good? Okay, almost done. So Market Street. So this is, we were just talking about Sixth up here. This is Market Street right here. So the request was to add all of Market Street to the no parking zone. So I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, but we believe that the port of Anacortes actually owns that road. So in the city's purview, it's a private road. That's, that's what I understand. I don't know if that's true or not. I'm trying to run it down.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I had a different understanding. I, I understood that the port owns the land beneath the road. The city owns an easement, however, which effectively makes the street a, a city street. But that that easement is not full width of a normal right-of-way and that the easement ends basically at the edge of the parking strip. I spoke with John Dumas, the interim executive director of the port. And he said that he had gone out there and walked that strip with Mr. Meesmer, our former planning director, and identified, looking at the plat maps, precisely where that edge is, where that boundary is. And their conclusion was that the parking strip belongs to the port and isn't subject to the city's easement. But he was also going to double check and, you know, try to verify it. Surely it's something that we need to have clarity on because is APD enforcing the traffic laws on the street? You know, do we have jurisdiction over the parking? If so, we should be enforcing our own code. But we, we need to get to 100% clarity on, on who owns what and where so that we really know.
Yeah, the, the other part of it too is that apparently the port is pretty effective at enforcing parking along, their, their signs are up. And so they, according to APD, they're, they're real good about making sure people don't park where it says no parking on their.
They've, they've helped us out because of some of that lack of clarity.
Yeah. So we, yeah, we'll run that to, to the bottom, to figure out where, where, where do the property lines lie? Is this our street or not? Currently, I, I can't tell you that for sure.
And, and when we run that to ground, then it will be, we'll bring that code change back if, if that's what we find out.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to add it to our no parking if it's ours. But if it's not ours, it's kind of puts us in a bind.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I've forgotten why we don't want parking on Market Street. Mr. Eam, could you remind me?
Why we do not allow parking on Market Street?
Yes.
I believe that occurred before I was here, but what I understand was the no parking, well, just looking at it, I don't, I don't really think it makes a lot of sense to have parking on. There's, there's no curb and gutter. There's no, I mean, there'd be parking halfway in the road essentially if they park there.
Don't people park there all the time though? Am I mistaken that people park there for Farmer's Market?
Mr. Walters.
I, I concur with Ms. Moulton. Yes, people do park there. I'm, and I'm actually not 100% sure if we wanted no parking or simply to pick up the parking regulations and figure out what we should apply to that street. Because it's so commonly used by patrons of the depot, maybe it makes sense to have a, a time-limited parking other than 72 hours. But the threshold question is, do we have the ability to regulate it? So I guess maybe we can defer judgment on that until then.
Yeah.
Hi, Sydney Neal, Public Works Administrator. We would leave parking on the west side for access to the depot and the market. It's no parking on the east side, which also has a bike lane and which is where the parks, the, sorry, the port's no parking signs currently exist. So if it is found that it's the city's street, we would replace the port's no parking signs on the east side with city no parking signs.
Great. Thank you, Sydney. That totally makes sense to me.
A great explanation. Thank you.
My lieutenant handles those things. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this one?
Yeah, there we go.
Rob Peterson, Anacortes. I will just say, having to go down there on a regular basis to drop kids off for sailing practice, because you don't, it's not a normal right-of-way, people parking on there. There is not enough room for two cars going by either direction if people are parking there on a regular basis. So it is very narrow.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so a little more look into the, the underlying easements and get back to you.
Want to come on that one? All right, one more and then we're done. All right, this is 32nd Street and Commercial. The request is to change the 32nd Street eastbound and westbound inside lanes to left turn only onto northbound and southbound Commercial. So the recommendation of the committee was to, this change would require WashDOT, Washington State Department of Transportation is WashDOT, to change the function of this intersection, creating a long, longer signal. And I believe, Councilmember Walters, you discussed this at the briefing that we had of the Public Works Committee, that we are engaging WashDOT about this and trying to see if we can't have a, just a dedicated left turn lane and then the right lane be the through, the straight and the right turn lane on, on both those crosses. Or this is just for the one crossing, but we were also looking at 22nd as well. So we're working with them on that. They seem pretty amenable to it. We just need to study it to make sure, somebody thought this was a good way to do it. So before we undo it, we better kind of have our homework done and make sure that we're doing a good thing by switching it, so.
So any council action at this point required?
No, there's no council action on that one. Just, just, this is the full list. We just wanted to brief the council on each of the items the committee took up. And that one, we will, that will come, well, that might be a small enough contract that it'll probably maybe not come to council. But I can obviously brief you guys and give you a heads up if we're moving forward on it. But like what I said earlier, we do not want to do the traffic study while ours closed because it's not normal at the moment in those intersections.
So I guess my only concern, I get the head nod from council, like if we do all this study and, and hey, the left turn lane, good to go with WashDOT. Is council good to go with that?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, maybe one potential other outcome of the study is to find out how improved the intersection could be if we had current signaling technology at the intersection. The camera that Mr. Eam noted would change the light back to green if there's nobody waiting there to make that turn. I, I would, I would think we would defer any decision until we had that data.
Yeah, that's a, so I've seen where it's, you have signals in series like this along the road and they actually, you can make them so they all communicate together. So that they know if you're going the speed limit, the other one turns green before you get there type of thing, as well as seeing how many cars. So the technology we have there, yes, is very outdated. It's extremely expensive to get to the current level and I, that's a, it's all Washington, Washington State Department of Transportation's kind of call on that. We can lobby them. We can get grants for that. It's just going to take a little bit of time. But the first thing we've got to do is, at least for this question about the left turn lane thing, we can just fix that with just changing out the, the signal bulb, which is very inexpensive and still have the timing. So that might be a good first step if the study agrees with our, our thought that that would actually help get people across commercial.
And while we're asking for better lights, we can ask for some overlay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's all sorts of stuff we could ask for along commercials, so. That concludes our committee report or committee discussion.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
I just want to say thank you for this document and bringing it to council. It's, it's nice to kind of get a summary of where there are some pain points around the city and to get an update was helpful. One of the Thirty Second and Commercial came from one of my constituents, so it was nice to be able to let him know that it was on the agenda and he could listen in. So, so thank you for this process. It was, is very helpful.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
Real quick, I just want to say same, same thing that Cleveland McGrath just said. Thirty Second and Commercial is a hot nightmare. I remember when the left turn signal came in on Commercial and it's been, you know, six years or something like that, but I felt like we talked about it for five before it happened. And it's my, my only concern, and I don't even want to say it out loud because I don't want to jinx this, but like coming east on Thirty Second to turn onto Commercial, if that one lane is turn only, we're just going to exacerbate a problem in the opposite direction. So instead of getting stuck behind somebody that wants to turn left for people to turn, you're getting stuck behind somebody who like is waiting on all of the other people that are turning. So, yeah, it's just, this is, this is the street that we are going to need to really focus on sooner rather than later. So thank you for bringing this up. I have like six people to go call tonight to tell them to look at the council packet and watch the video.
Great. Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I also want to encourage any member of the public who happens to be watching this or otherwise finds out about it, if you've got a parking issue in your neighborhood, go ahead and submit that to Public Works so that we can consider it. We, as a committee, have decided that we're going to consider those in batches once a quarter and hopefully have input from APD as well as Public Works so that we can make good recommendations. But we certainly know that we didn't get the parking code a hundred percent right. I do think that there's even one suggestion that we may have missed in the list. Maybe we can find that and come back to it. But feel free. I mean, it's, they're your streets, so feel free to make suggestions and highlight problems that you see.
Sorry, I've got one more thing, Mayor, just to follow on to Councilmember Walters. So we did hear a little bit from the public about safety concerns or like they're concerned that we have this quarterly meeting. And I just want the public to know while we're talking about it, that if you do have a safety concern, do contact me or the, or the police chief directly. We take those very seriously. We're not going to wait for a committee meeting to take action if it's a safety hazard or a safety emergency of any sort. Most of these are kind of parking, so it's kind of like, oh, is it really a safety issue? Probably not. But at the, if you do have a legitimate safety issue, like you think it's dangerous, we do want you to contact us and we will, we will act immediately, so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And no further business before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Have a good night.